Call our meeting to order. It is Thursday, May 18th. This meeting is being broadcast and recorded by WCTV and audio recorded by Jamie Wixton. Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin tonight's meeting with public participation. And I see we have a unique member in the audience tonight, Dr. DeAndrea. Would you like to explain this character?
We do. I would like to introduce the school committee to Gigi. Gigi visited Wareham Elementary School for STEAM Night this evening and thought that she would stop by and say hi to the school committee. Gigi is the penguin in the ST Math software game. Students help Gigi overcome obstacles by solving math puzzles. Gigi crosses the screen every time a student demonstrates understanding of a math concept, leading the student to the next challenging puzzle. With well-designed learning games, students are intrinsically motivated to keep trying. They persist because they are engaged and believe they can succeed. By design, game levels will get more difficult but always have a possible solution. Gigi becomes the personification of trying. Others may give up, but when trying to explain something, but Gigi never does. Gigi provides helpful feedback no matter how many times you try and has confidence that you can solve the puzzle. As students persevere in problem-solving, they develop a belief in themselves that has powerful effects on learning. It develops confidence, it develops perseverance, increased learning capacity, and higher achievement. Here in Wareham, students in grades K through 6 have been working with Gigi for the past four years. On one of the handouts that you have, you can see a report of last week's usage of the program as well as research about why we use ST Math here. Teachers can see all the students, all that the students are doing, and assign standards to match what they are doing in class as review or as preview. We will be looking at correlations between assessment data and ST Math puzzles locally, but nationally, students who play score higher than students who do not. Our students like it so much that Wareham Elementary School won this Gigi costume for March Mathness. You see that? March, I'll say it again, Mathness. Out of 95 schools, we won. And so I just want to say thank you to Gigi for being here.
Thank you, Gigi. And Gigi does not want to speak. That is correct?
Gigi doesn't speak.
Can't speak. I see.
How did you know that's speaking?
Thank you, Gigi.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a pool to figure out who Gigi really is?
If you would like to have a pool, we could set one up.
I think you meant a pool for Gigi.
I think Gigi's leaving. Bye, Gigi. Thank you.
Bye, Gigi. Thank you.
We should at least throw us a fish or something.
Well, I don't know how to follow that exactly, but do we have any other public participation? Seeing none and no other amorphized animals in the building, we will go on to good news.
May all our public participation be so succinct.
Exactly. I agree. Anyone with good news?
I'd just say that I just came from STEAM Night at the elementary school. It was very, very well-attended, lots and lots of families and students, and some great activities for the kids to participate in and parents to participate in and grandparents and family members. And a lot of involvement by the community, which was great to see. The police were there and some of the organizations around town, so thank you to all of them. It was a great event.
And an art show.
And an art show, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. April?
I don't know if this is partially stealing some of Indy's thunder, but the track team will be participating this weekend in the SCC Championship Meet. It was moved from Saturday to Sunday at 1:00 in Secong, so we want to wish the track team luck at conference. And tomorrow is the last day of school for the seniors. I don't know if that's good news or not, but I'm super proud of all the kids that I know who are getting ready to graduate, and it's going to be an exciting couple of weeks for the seniors, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Fay?
Do I have to come up?
Just so we can hear you at the mic.
I just wanted to share that we, Mr. Palladino recently, he was participating in a Wareham Coalition meeting, and he shared with us something that came from High Point that we've added to our website. It's on the main page of the website. It's also on the homeless page and on the special education page, and it is called "The Street Sheet." It is a collection of all the local resources for families, from mental health to food pantries to clothing to senior and housing, all different kinds of services for people to access. It's all on one beautiful sheet.
And former Wareham teacher alumni Jan Barton had a huge part in putting that together for Turning Point, because I'm on the board with her there as well, and she did a lot of work to put that together. So it's great to see Wareham teachers still giving back to the community like that.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda, item number four. This is Indiana's farewell student representative report. So no pressure, Indiana, but...
So it's going to be a longer one, but I'll try to get through it fast. All right. So some things coming up. There will be a car wash this Saturday at the fire station in West Wareham. That'll be to benefit the class of 2026, and that will be from 12 to 4:00. Hopefully, the weather will hold off for them. The annual DECA auction, the 44th annual, so 44 years we've been doing this, will be held this Sunday from 1:30 to 3:30 p.m. Several items will be auctioned off by a Wareham graduate, Colonel Philip Gomes. They have a four-pack of Red Sox tickets, a four-pack of Nantucket Ferry tickets, a 55-inch Smart TV, Patriots tickets, basically everything. So please go to that. Tickets can be purchased at the door. Yeah. Wareham High School had its spring concert this past Wednesday. They had the chorus, beginner band, advanced band, jazz workshop, jazz ensemble, all performed, and it was awesome. They celebrated the spring. They were all wearing their Hawaiian clothes, and it was really nice. The art show was on May 10th, the high school art show. This event, it was a fairy theme, which was really interesting. So members of the Honor Society and Student Council volunteered to do face painting and chalk art and fairy dust for kids. There was music from the band, and of course, all the artwork was on display. So great job to Mrs. Dion, Ms. Sharples, and Ms. Cunio, Mr. Roth, and Chef Breda for organizing the event, and all of the students involved in that. National Honor Society inducted its new spring members this past Tuesday, so congratulations to all of the new Honor Society inductees. Dr. DeAndrea was there, so thank you for being there to welcome them in. And congratulations to the new class officers and student council officers who have also been elected recently. As April said, last day for seniors is tomorrow, and I can tell you that some people, it would be good news, but some of us, it's not. So our senior exit interviews and finals will take place next week. Prom was this past Saturday for the senior class. It was at the Cape Club in Falmouth. It was amazing, perfect venue, perfect time. All the students loved it, even Mr. Palladino loved it and showed us some of his dance moves, so. Thank you.
You should see one.
Afterwards. So thank you to Ms. Tarasconi, the class advisor, Mrs. Medina, the student council advisor, and all the chaperones who helped coordinate the event. The senior car parade will be this coming Tuesday, so next Tuesday, May 23rd. The parade starts at 6:00, and it'll start at Merchant's Way, go down Main Street, and end up at the high school. So please go and line the streets in support of the senior class. Graduation will be held at Spillane Field on Friday, June 2nd, and this is, of course, open to the public, and will start at 6:30 p.m. And as many of you know, it is my last school committee meeting tonight, because in over two weeks from now, just over two weeks from now, I will no longer be a student, which kind of doesn't make sense for a student representative to not be a student. So since I was in fifth grade, I remember being so eager to sit up on this table on behalf of the student body and represent our amazing Wareham students. While I'm sad that my time's coming to a close, I'm so excited for Gisella Priestley to serve in this position next year, and I know she'll be an amazing advocate for all the Wareham students. I want to thank Mr. Palladino. I know he's not here, but he's been an incredible mentor to me over the past five years and has shaped me into the person I am today. And before I was sitting up here, I was often sitting next to him in the audience, and he would always sit next to me and then remind me that I should go home and study, and I always stayed until the end. So thank you to Mrs. Medina and the student council for giving me the opportunity to serve here, and to the middle school student council for sparking my passion in student voice and representation. Thank you to all the school committee members, Dr. Schwab, Dr. DeAndrea, and Jamie Wixton for always helping me out along the way and valuing my input and comments. And finally, thank you to the students of Wareham from kindergarten through 12th grade who make this district so unique and excellent and who are absolutely worth fighting for every day. There's so much pride in this district, from its faculty and staff to the students to the administration. I'm so proud to have gotten the world-class education that I did from Wareham Public Schools. I'm proud to be a Viking, proud to be sporting my Vikings tie for one last time, one of the last times ever, and proud to say this concludes my final report.
So I wanted to know what year you plan to run for school committee?
Four years from now.
I'm betting he's probably telling the truth.
Yeah. I'll be back. See you later, not goodbye.
So Indy, we have a certificate of recognition for you. Says presented to Indiana troop on behalf of the school committee in appreciation for your service as student representative for the Wareham School Committee. And I just want to thank you for always being so articulate, well-prepared, and for representing the students of Wareham so well, and also the community of Wareham so well. So thank you. You will get the certificate. You get to keep your name placard. Bring that home with you tonight, please.
You can save it for when you're back up there.
Okay. Next, we have the Director of Finance report.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations, Indy, and to all your classmates as well. I'm sure that's a very proud accomplishment, and you all should be proud and excited for the future. So I've enjoyed working with you at the school committee meeting, so best of luck to you and your classmates. So I have a few things for you all tonight. The first report I have is the April financial report. It's a similar format that you see. So right now, we're coming down to the end of the fiscal year, so we're looking at all of our accounts, our expenditures, our encumbrances, checking our purchase orders, trying to close out some that we may not need. So we're really trying to get to an anticipated year-end balance, you know, day by day. It's looking that it's going to be very, very close getting to year-end, as I mentioned. We have had projecting probably a deficit of about 360,000 in salaries, which can be covered by the budget freeze, some other expenditure accounts, but it may come down to having to cover some of that with some other funds, and I'm going to speak about those later in my presentation, so we may have to use some of our other revolving funds to cover. But there's a few things that we're still looking into, discussing with health insurance, other accounts. We want to make sure that some of the encumbrances that we have, they're truly needed. If not, that'll help us out. So it's going to be just a busy next month or so, just monitoring the budget. I don't know if anyone has any specific questions about the April budget report?
Jeff?
In looking at the summary document of the seven major categories, the category that had the most transfers in was pupil services. I assume that's Melissa's favorite budget. In retrospect, and maybe you can defer to Melissa if you like, that's up to you, in retrospect, and I realize this wasn't your budget, how did that happen? What was the primary reason for that to occur, because that's the largest percentage?
Correct. So in this instance, even though the title is Pupil Services, which is the Department of Ed code, it's not Student Services. So it's not the Student Services that we think of with Melissa. Melissa's accounts are mostly instructional accounts.
Oh, really?
Or tuition accounts, which are the 9,000s. So here, the 3,000 is transportation, and transportation and some student activities, which in this case is mostly athletics. So in this case here, you're going to see transfers tonight for transportation, and it's mostly our out-of-district transportation at this point in time. So it's those very costly vendor transportation that were required for students who are in out-of-district placements or who are in foster student transportation or homeless transportation. And some of those are upwards of $300, $400 per day, per student.
So in my mind, that still is Melissa's area, at least.
Yes. It is. Yeah. It's transportation.
Transportation.
Of students that are in her area, correct.
And maybe I'll save my other question for the transfers. Okay. Thank you.
So but also to answer your question, in retrospect, looking at this, of course, we were doing the budget early on in the fiscal year. So it's some of these accounts that are out-of-district placements, especially those that are more transient, it's very hard to predict. So I've always looked back at what the history has been, looked to see who the students that we're transporting currently, now remember, this was back in November, December, and projected if those same students were here a year from then, what would that cost be? So that's how I came about. So hopefully, you know, that's, it's the best baseline we could use at the time to predict for next year. But a lot of factors come into play with that, whether or not we can transport some of these routes in-house, whether or not we're seeing more vendors enter into special ed transportation, so maybe that's more competition. You know, maybe we can, if there's more, if we're getting more vendors to bid on these routes, because we do bid them out, every route that we have, and we go with the best price. So more competition perhaps, but right now, it's something that I know, I was just at a school business officials conference today, and that was the topic that we spent about the last hour on with the Cape Cod area business managers, was what are we, how can we, you know, improve transportation and control costs and work together to, you know, to figure out how to get some of these students to the places that they need to go.
So is that a very detailed, articulate way of saying your level of comfort with next year's budget is better than the results from this year's budget?
Certainly, yes, because I have some history for myself, you know, for doing it, so I can look back to, you know, what we budgeted and why. So I think that is that, but I think in years to come, it will, you know, in some respects, be a little bit easier and a little bit more predictable, but there are always those budget line items and this transportation, out-of-district transportation, and even out-of-district tuition is one of them, because they're just so, each individual student can be so costly and sometimes unpredictable. So, you know, you just budget for what you have, what you know of at the time, and certainly, you know, in years past, I know in my previous district, we could many years ago put in a buffer for students, but then as budgets got tighter and tighter, those buffers, you know, had to be let go of, you know, in order to maintain what we knew we had, not what we might have.
Now, it's interesting. From my finance committee days, I remember that there are two town accounts where they can go over budget. One is snow and ice.
Snow and ice.
And I think the other one was legal fees, but I'm not 100% sure. But I remember, snow and ice was definitely one of them. You don't have any accounts like that, do you?
Well, the school department budget is a line item, is a one-line budget. So what that means is, is we, the school department, unlike town departments, can go over their budgets, and they are able to do budget transfers throughout the year because the school committee has line item authority on their budget lines. So in that case, yes, but the bottom line at that point, that's what we're zeroing in on right now, and that's what we're, I'm looking at closely, and we're, you know, given any time, you know, every payroll, we look and predict based on the payroll, what we're looking at for salary, surpluses, deficits. And certainly, some salary accounts are known, right? You know what your contracted salaries are going to be, but what we don't know is those substitutes or maybe some of those hourly wages that might vary. Certainly, the substitutes would vary from week to week. So it makes it a little tough. Some weeks, you feel a little bit better. Some weeks, you think, oh, we're not in as good a place. So it's, you know, it is coming down to the wire, but it's just looking at the budget almost, you know, at least once a week, if not more.
April?
Do you think that with the change from this year going forward to next year with the COVID requirements, that the sub-lines might be significantly less because the holding period of how many days you're required to be out will have changed?
I hope that that's helpful. I think it's been very difficult to budget in the past couple of years with COVID in some line items and subs being one of them. So perhaps the utilization may or may not be higher, but you just don't have that history to look back to, because we really, up until what, last school year, we didn't have a good, normal school year to look at, and that certainly, I think, comes into play with a lot of the, some of the line items, you know, that we look at when you look to budget. But, you know, hopefully, you know, when I, when we looked at the budget for next year for subs, we looked at what we had used last year for subs and tried to bring the sub-budget up as much as possible to what we thought we had been using. And, you know, so that remains to be seen. I know that is one area that a lot of school districts do struggle with as well, but, you know, that is a good point. Hopefully, you know, we can have some lower, some lower costs in sub areas.
Thank you.
You're welcome. My next, the next report is the budget transfer. So as I mentioned, I have a budget transfer for transportation, special ed transportation in and out of district. Now, this is a result of an additional route that has routes that are coming into place. I believe it was a student who did not require transportation, but for the last several months will require transportation. And then there's some other, there was a small deficit leading into that. So that is one transfer. And the budget line that I'm looking to transfer from is replacement of motor vehicles. That was a line item that was not used in the budget this year, and, you know, I don't foresee it being used, so we can safely transfer that into transportation. The other area is high school athletic director and coaches' salaries. So what I looked at is we do have, as of the last payroll, we had a deficit in the salary line, and I looked to project it out to June 30th to cover that deficit from, you know, just to do one transfer hopefully into that line item. And I know we've talked about this in the past, is that going forward, what we tried to do in the budget is look at budget for the coaches that we had listed in the collective bargaining agreement. So, you know, it's my hope that that, that this won't be an issue next year, that we will have budgeted for all of the coaches. And again, I think some of this is quite possibly a result of just coming out of the pandemic and resuming normal school operations, that maybe it was harder to predict in the past, you know, what you were going to have, what you're going to be able to do and have for coaches and need for coaches. And so I think, you know, this is just getting us back to normal operations, fortunately.
Jeff?
I confess, I was surprised to see that transfer. We literally didn't budget for a coach?
The budget line item?
I mean, that's multiple coaches. That amount is multiple coaches. It's not one coach that we missed. So, yeah, I know, it's not your budget. Yeah, okay. Bottom line, I was very surprised to see we couldn't even budget coaches accurately. But the bottom line is, there was insufficient dollars in the budget to cover the number of coaches, which is based on the sports that we have.
Right. Based on the sports that we currently have this school year.
And we didn't add any, we didn't add any sports.
So what this is, was the deficit of, that you saw the current budget, that was after, I think, the, one of the first, the first half perhaps of the spring coaches' salaries. So what we'll need is to overcome that deficit and then the remainder of the balance of the salaries for the coach and the athletic director.
Yeah, I get it. A quick question on...
And some of this line item actually does include any employees who are officials or working at games, just a small, small amount, certainly not the big amount, not the salaries, but perhaps some of the small amounts that employees may earn working at athletic events.
Okay. So you mentioned substitute teachers, another difficult line item to predict, to project, rather. When I look at the three line items for the three schools, because it's not, there's not just one line item, it's for three, the middle school had, actually had, isn't using all of its budget, the high school is using a lot more than its budget, and the elementary school is using a little more than its budget. Is, and I, I would hope the answer to this question is yes, but something is going to, something tells me the answer is not as simple as, can I construe from that that those represent different levels of attendance, absenteeism, if you will, based on those three schools? Or is it not that simple?
I don't think it's that simple.
Breda then?
We'd have to look into it further, but it could be a factor of whether the original budget was sufficient, because look at what each school has in comparison to each, the other school versus how many teachers and parers they have, the bathroom monitors come out of the substitute lines, so that comes into play. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of factors that, so I don't think that you could necessarily look at the expenditures of one school over another and draw a straight line to whether or not they have a higher or lower absenteeism.
Although candidly, if I were you, and I don't want to be you, I would be very tempted in going into a budget process to say, okay, if my absenteeism level was X, okay, how much would that cost me in substitute teachers, and is that a reasonable X, whatever that number is? But that's just my mathematical mind way of looking at it, and it's never quite that simple, is it?
Yeah. But that is, that is a good, that is a good thought. That is a good idea.
Yeah, and then hold the principles to that level of absenteeism, because that's a reasonable level of absenteeism. Anyway, I'm done. Sorry.
I think with subs too, what helped last year is that there was an additional 125,000 from the state around spring of last year. That was a one-time, you know, money from the state that said, use it however you want, and that helped cover the subs. So even with that, there was a deficit, I believe, last year. So when I looked at that, I factored that, like recouping that 125 plus whatever else. So that's, and then it got to levels that were higher than what the FY20 budget, '04 budget could bear for substitutes. So this is definitely going to be one to watch next year as well.
Yeah. Maybe we should hold, no, never. Maybe we should hold the teachers to an absenteeism level that's no higher than the students.
Any other questions on the transfer request? So do we have a motion to accept the transfers as presented?
Some of them.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? 400. Thank you.
Thank you. And my final report for tonight is the report on the revolving funds. So what you have is a list of the revolving funds for Wareham Public Schools. What I did was I listed them all. Then the order that you see them in, you might say, why are they in this order, Kristin? That's just the order of the fund that they're assigned in the VEDAR system, so however numerated. So however numerically they appear, that's how it is on here. So you can see they have the, I put in the FY23 beginning balance, the year-to-date revenue. Projected revenue in that column is anything that I knew that we were going to get. So for example, the 35,000 from the town meeting article for McKinney-Vento, the May and June payments from the ROTC, and the April, May, and June payments for school choice. Now, there's other revenue that is going to come in, but certainly, for example, preschool tuition, but it's not as predictable as those that we know that we're going to get. The other column you see is FY23 year-to-date expended and encumbered. And then a projected balance for, as of now, this is what it would be looking like for June 30th. Now, certainly, you know, come June 30th, those balances could be quite a little different. Some revenue could come in. We could have, we have had further expenditures since the printing of this report in the athletics account. So this is just a snapshot in time. And what I also did is on the successive pages, is I took each revolving fund and I gave some greater context. You'll see the projected balance, which is the projected June 30th balance. And then I gave some greater context to the revenues and the expenses. To give you an idea of what are the revenues into these funds and what are the expenses out of these funds. And these are, these are looking at the expenditures from this year. So it's not just general, what can we, what do we take in and what do we expand? This is more specific to what we have taken in in these funds and spent out of these funds this year. And even though Circuit Breaker is not technically a revolving fund, I included it because it is a large source of revenue and expense for us. And I thought it important just to, you know, to have it on here and to just explain further. And, you know, we can use it from one fiscal year to the next. And it does, it is a source of revenue and a source of expenditure. So that's why I just left it a little, I made a space at the end, but I thought that it was important just for informational purposes to include it as well. So I'm not sure if anyone has any questions. I can certainly go through some of them if you'd like.
So putting aside Circuit Breaker, and I appreciate the distinction, how much of the, you didn't total it, but I can see approximately what it would probably add up to. How much of the non-Circuit Breaker projected balances, and I appreciate the fact that they could change a little between now and June 30th, are, so to speak, encumbered for next year's budget?
So for next year's budget, we do have, like you said, aside from Circuit Breaker, because we did, we are projecting to use in next year's budget $1 million in Circuit Breaker. Anything else? I don't think, I'm looking at this list.
School choice comes to mind.
Yes. Well, it would be for the, it's not necessarily encumbered per se, but we are paying out of school choice the, the school share of the towns, of the town HR director. So I would think that that would be, that's not in the local budget. So that would come from school choice. And that's on page four, you'll see there, our share.
To me, that might as well be encumbered.
So out of, and out of, also out of school choice is the expenditures for the night school program as well. So those are not encumbered, but, you know, they're in, encumbered, you know, a mental note that that needs to be used for, for the night school.
Because if we don't use it, we'll have to find it from somewhere else. Right.
Correct.
Can I ask, what is, under school choice, it says designer services for Wareham Middle School and Wareham High School projects? What is that?
So those, that was the middle school and high school MSBA projects that we currently have. So that was the feasibility studies for the boiler and for the roof replacement. And we had some town article funds that we used to pay for the costs that were incurred prior to getting fully accepted into the MSBA program and getting reimbursed. So those were some of the non-reimbursable costs, so the feasibility study. So at that point, we were coming to the end and those, that's, we just had no other funds to fund them. So unfortunately, I mean, it is good that we have school choice funds because that is our, you know, our, one of our last areas to fall back on.
And just one more question, and April, thank you. Under global ed, we have almost $47,000. And it says an expense program fee, so we pay that fee every year?
That I'm not sure. We did have to pay it this year. It was right during the summer, so that came out in July or August. So that was the fee to, I think, to continue on in the program and to be part of the program. It was, I believe it was through the Department of Homeland Security, so it might have something, you know, some sort of registration fee or-
So is that a program that the principals could explain to us maybe at the middle school and high school?
I wouldn't think so, they could hopefully, yes.
Okay. April?
So going back to, you said we pay a percentage of the HR for the town. Do you know how that's broken down? Because from my understanding, like, the director of HR is also the assistant town administrator. So are we only paying the HR portion of the salary? Or is the whole salary of both positions split between every member of the town that would go through HR? Or do we only go through that portion of the salary?
Right, that, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure of that. I do know that our share this year was, that we were asked to fund or part of an agreement, I believe, was 40,000. So I'm not sure, you know, entire, how that is-
Do you know how many other departments in the town are contributing to that salary?
I do not, no.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's an interesting question, April, because I was under the impression that no other town department was contributing. This was unique to us because we're a separate legal entity and we're getting a resource from another separate legal entity. Is that incorrect?
I don't know if it's incorrect. That was, that was my assumption also, but April asked a question and it did make me think, maybe, I don't know.
Municipal maintenance was getting assessed, something, for example, for, for an HR department. You know, it would seem to me that that would be entirely, but we have the distinct pleasure of getting assessed because we're a separate legal entity.
Right.
That's my understanding.
Do other districts have their own HR person? Or is that something that is normally done through the town? And is it more cost-effective if we have to utilize more to have an in-house HR person for just school things where we're not dealing directly with the town?
So my experience has been that the school district has their own HR department or handles, or someone in the district that handles HR.
And we do not, we utilize through the town?
I would, I would say that I am the HR department. I do use the, the HR resource in the town, but as a resource. I am the one who handles all the HR issues.
So I'm just curious, like, how that would break down? If you're or the superintendent as a, as a whole is basically doing the majority of the HR necessity, why we're paying $40,000 for a resource if we're not, if it's not necessary? It just seems like a budget expenditure that we shouldn't be involved in if you're doing that work. I'm just curious, because that's, I mean, I know it's a drop in the bucket technically for our district, but if you're doing that work, that's a teacher salary, in my opinion. So it's just, I'm just, it's interesting to hear it broken down that way.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the history of why that started.
Okay, thank you.
I think April's point is well-taken.
I, I agree.
But I think the good news is anytime we wanted to say, no, thank you, we could save the 40,000, but we would simply be unable to call. On the other hand, we do have a, a labor attorney we can call as well. So it's not like we wouldn't have a resource.
Right.
That's been my experience, is that I have, in, as a superintendent in my previous position, I was the HR. And when I needed advice, I would speak with our attorney.
Right. I don't know the history of this 40,000.
I'd be curious of it. And when that was put into agreement with the district or the reasoning behind it, and if it's no longer. It might have been necessary at one time, but I don't, I don't personally feel like it might necessarily be necessary if it's going to put potentially like two parays or one teacher in the district. And we need people in front of kids more than we need a resource for HR, so.
And I'm pretty sure it's a relative new thing because I'm also pretty sure that it didn't exist in my prior terms as a school committee member.
Or we just weren't aware of it, maybe.
I think I would have been aware of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on revolving funds? Thank you, Kristin.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the health wellness report with Mike and Joan.
Good evening.
Hi.
Wellness. So the federal government requires districts to have a wellness policy. And we are also, districts are mandated to have a wellness committee. The, before COVID, we did have a wellness committee that was meeting and such. During the period of COVID, it became defunct. We didn't really do wellness committee meetings during the, the school years of COVID. We recognized this last school year and basically put together a plan for this school year to rejuvenate the wellness committee and also review the wellness policy. Now, the Subcommittee for Policy Review had been routinely updating the wellness policy, but we wanted to make sure that we conducted, there's a requirement for doing a triennial assessment. And technically, it should be the wellness committee that does it. And so we wanted to make sure that that was happening as well. And besides the motivation that it was the right thing to do, also, it was going to be part of the Food Services Department's administrative review this school year. So we wanted, I was very motivated to try to make sure that the district had a, a good plan in place for the wellness policy and wellness committee. We, with Joan Siemens as our chairperson, we solicited membership for the wellness committee and stood it up at the beginning of the school year and reviewed the wellness policy. And Joan will be talking about that in just a minute. But we identified that while the wellness policy met the minimum standards that the USDA had published, unfortunately, once we did the assessment, we found that there were, there were a lot of gaps, a lot of things where, where there was something lacking. So as part of the assessment, we were able to identify what we should include in the policy. And so that was one of the things that the school committee, I'm sorry, the wellness committee worked on through the school year. And with that, I'll turn it over to Joan.
Great, thank you. So the wellness committee met five times during this current school year. We had representation from teachers, from parents. I gave you four documents as samples, so I did give you the member list that you have. I gave you a sample of what our meeting agenda and posting looked like. So you could see that, things that we discussed. I gave you a sample of the notes that Mr. Russo took at each meeting. And then we followed the open meeting law, so we approved those and kept those as well. And then I'll talk about the WELLSAT 3.0 and the WELLSAT I. All of this information is on the district website, under the food service tab. It's called health and wellness. So all of our agendas are there, all of the minutes are there, et cetera. So as Mike said, we came together to look at the school district policy. And we had a tool that we were able to use to go through that particular policy and score it. It's called the WELLSAT 3.0. So that was one specific survey that the committee members did. And then we met together, all of our meetings were by Zoom. And we had to score what we felt we rated for that particular standard. And with the RUD Center, that gives us the WELLSAT 3.0, they had guidelines and they had language as far as what we had to meet in order to get a score of a two, or a score of a one, or zero. So we did that. You'll see on the WELLSAT 3.0 and WELLSAT I that you have in front of you, there's a scorecard that we got as a district. So the left side is based on the policy that we had. And as Mike said, we met some of the minimum requirements, but we knew we had a lot of work to do to beef that up. So from that particular exercise, we then looked to see, all right, we have a policy, how is it being implemented in the schools? So we used a tool called the WELLSAT I, again, from this RUD Center. And I interviewed the principals in each school. And I interviewed the phys ed department and the health teachers from each school. And each category had their own separate interviews I had to do and score. So we went through all of that, we shared all of that at our meetings. So you'll see those scores on the right-hand side of this particular chart. So from here, we know that we have some work to do in the schools and we'll set that as some of the goals for next year. But we were able to revise the district policy that went before policy review. And then, as you know, for school committee, you did approve that. So that new policy is now on our district website. So that's what we're using going forth. One of the criteria from having the health and wellness committee is updating the school committee based on the work that we've done. So that's why Mike and I are here tonight. So we'll work with the principals. They recommend having a school, a school wellness committee. I'll work with the principals on that. It could be part of their school council if they don't want to do another whole separate committee. So they have some flexibility in how they want to do that. And then just looking at some of the recommendations moving forth. So that took all of five meetings to get through all of this information. And if you have any questions, we would be happy to answer them.
Well, I guess my main question would be, where do you think we have the most work to do? What areas can we beef up or that benefit our students?
I think one area is always the local, like farm producing, and we try to do that. Phys ed is also another area where they want to make sure our kids are out and getting exercises and playing. So elementary, I know they have phys ed, middle school, their, their schedule is just structured differently. So they may make a recommendation on time with meeting time. It may not be what they are fully recommending, but we are making sure that we have recess involved and we have phys ed involved, you know, recess up to grade five at least.
So do we need more phys ed, as an example? Or are we happy with where we are in that regard?
It's going to depend on the various schools. And again, when the principals look at what they need and needing classroom teachers versus, you know, extra time for phys ed, that's when those difficult discussions have to be had.
Well, I guess, have we been having those discussions? Is my question.
A small amount, yes, we have had, we've had some discussion in that.
The principals are aware of the recommended amount of time that is what's recommended. We've had that conversation, and then it's a question of having that as a goal. How can we get there or at least work towards it? So that is a conversation that has happened.
And on the scorecard itself, a two is better than a one? Can I assume that?
Yeah, two is the best that you can have.
But these are all self-reported scores then? I mean, this isn't like an outside group? The wellness committee itself gets together and comes up with this?
Yes, sir, but it's using metrics that they provide. They, as part of the assessment kit, you have the tools to go through. And is this in existence? Is this happening? Is that happening? And then you score it based on those questions.
So basically, twos you feel pretty good about, and the ones might be areas for improvement?
Yeah, well, zeros are definitely areas for improvement.
Okay.
Ones, you might make a conscious decision that one is meeting the need or, but two would be ideal.
Okay, thank you. April?
So based on this scorecard, does this get submitted somewhere? And does this have any effect on, like, phys ed, health, or nutrition funding?
No, it doesn't get reported. However, the, during our administrative review, which happened in January- and we stood with, with our updating of it and our triennial review and such. During that review, some of the things that I had said earlier were, were specifically noted. They noted that our existing policy, which had not yet been updated, meant the minimum requirements, but it needed work, and that work has been achieved. But beyond that, and, and they were complimentary of what we had in place, our team meetings and what was going on and the process. We explained everything and showed with them some of the materials that we were working on. And so during the administrative, administrative review, it is looked at, the administrative review happens once every four years. So it's not being looked at, as far as I know, more often than that. Now, Desi can certainly look at it through some other method, but the one, because food is, food and Phys Ed are two big players in it, but food is the one that they use their administrative review of the Food Service Department to actually, they, they plugged the wellness into that review, and that's, that's when they look at it. But I don't, I'm not aware of any other time that they would be looking at it, but as far as this assessment, we were not required to submit it to anyone.
Okay, thank you.
Indiana?
So, I was actually on the Wellness Committee a few years, well, multiple years ago. Has there been any work to try to get a student representative on that committee?
That will be our goal for next year.
Awesome.
Yeah, we just wanted to get started, having the, the support from the teachers and parents, but we definitely want to have students involved.
And now, with the review process, I, I just don't have it in front of me, so I'm curious, did that factor in things other than, like, physical activity, nutrition, like, school wellness and mental health and stuff like that?
There is a section that does talk about, you know, social, emotional, but it also talks about food that you sell after school, or food that you might sell during the school day, or drinks during the school day. So it encompasses a great deal. There's different categories. You see a nutrition education as one, school meals as one, standards for competitive and other food beverages. We have physical education and physical activity, wellness promotion and marketing, and then the implementation, evaluation, and communication. So it all kind of falls in one of those standards.
Awesome, thank you.
And I think you, and the Fuel Up program?
Yeah, yeah. That was, that's awesome, an awesome resource, too, for, I'm sure it would be for the Wellness Committee.
Yeah, and that's something, when the schools start having a hand in this, that maybe we can bring that back as well.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Melissa?
Yes.
Under Section 2, the Standards for the USDA Child Nutrition Programs and School Meals, obviously, this is somewhat easier for us because all our meals are free, both lunches and breakfast, but I noticed you gave yourself, and I, that's an accurate statement, you gave yourself a one on, these are your scores, right?
Yes, if you're looking at the WellSat 3.0, but again, that had to do with the policy.
Policy.
How, what did we have? So a lot of this, we were already doing it.
Well, I was specifically referring to the fact that you gave yourself a one as a related to specific strategies to increase participation. Where do you think you're falling down with respect to a strategy to increase participation when the meals are free?
Well, two things. One, it wasn't specifically listed in the policy, so we had to get wording in the policy.
What wasn't specifically?
That, that we needed to be look, working. So one of the things that get, get, that was graded was, did our policy have wording in it to direct us to work on improving participation? And it didn't. So we made sure we plugged that in there. But we were working on improving participation. So, so, right, so the WellSat 3.0, that first column, that's basically, there were a lot of things going through there, not only on the food side, but on the health and physical education and all that, where we were doing the things, but we didn't have a requirement or guidance in the policy to do it. So the policy was graded.
Enough, enough, I'm good, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
No problem. Any other comments or questions? So next year, when this group is up and running again, how often would they meet during the course of a year? Would you anticipate meeting next year as a group?
Probably another five times throughout the year. We started in October, we ended in March.
Okay.
So.
All right, great. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations, Indy. You've made all your principals in the district proud, so good luck in your future.
Next up, we have Director of Student Services Report. Melissa, thank you.
Good evening. It is Special Education Parent Satisfaction Survey time. So we sent out our survey this year in hopes that we would have better participation than we did last year. We tried to keep it very simple and easy. I also, at Dr. DeAndrea's suggestion, used a Google form this year, which parents can access from their telephone. So for parents who might not have access to a computer at home, they were able to do this on their cellphone, because we figured most people have access to minimally a cellphone. I tried to keep it focused on areas that are important to me when I'm looking at how we service our parents and families when it comes to special education. So I kept the questions to really kind of focus on customer service, which is really what we do for a business, for our parents and guardians and families in the district. We used a five-point Likert scale, so one is very satisfied, five is very unsatisfied, and then three was neutral, and then satisfied and unsatisfied. It was sent out to all 591 families who have students with active IEPs. That includes in-district and out-of-district students, and we only got 69 responses, which was a little disappointing, but I have some plans on how to hopefully increase that next year.
Was there any pattern to the ones that did respond?
It's tough, because I feel like, I, my opinion is it's the same parents every year that respond to our surveys. Our numbers are very close, I mean, I'm going.
Are they disproportionately out of district? Are they disproportionately associated with a certain, a certain type of child?
No, it's pretty much, it's a, it's a pretty even split of, it's about 10% of each in district and out of district. So about five of the parents, five to six of the parents had students with intensive needs who are out of district, and the rest were in-district students. I don't aggregate the data by what disability the child has, I just look at parents in district versus out of district. I could probably further break it down, if you wanted me to.
I was, I was just curious. But, but, but by the way, people send out surveys, they're almost always disappointed with the results.
Yeah. I keep hoping, one day, you know, we're going into year seven next year, so I have, I have high hopes. So our goal of doing this clearly every year is to gauge parent satisfaction in the way that we service our students with special education, the way that we work collaboratively, oh my gosh, I can't speak, with them, and also how easy it is for them to access support from administration and staff when they need to. So those are the five areas that I was looking for, and clearly, we want to use this data to help drive us to be better at our jobs. So our first question revolved around convenience of scheduling meetings. So since COVID, we have had an, probably about a 40% increase in parent participation in IEP meetings, which is huge. And I feel that even after the, the Department of Education said, "Go back to in-person meetings," we continue to also offer the virtual meeting platform for parents. And about 80% of our parents still choose the virtual platform. And I think the reason for that is, they don't have to take a day off of work, they can just go sit in their car. A lot of parents participate from their car and just take a quick break from work instead of having to take a half a day off to drive into school, find childcare, all of those different pieces. So we've had great success. So we want to make it as convenient as possible for families to schedule their IEP meetings for their students. So the question was, school district works with families to schedule IEP meetings at times and in a format that's convenient to them. We had 60.9% say that they're very satisfied with that. I, I took that as a big win, because we really try to accommodate our families and, and provide them with a time that makes sense for them, and really work around their schedules as much as we possibly can within the constraints that we have with our, with our school day. Most of the questions that you see range between 71 to 76% in a favorable, neutral to very satisfied. Again, I take that as a big, a win. I'd always love to see 90 to 100%, but I, I'm happy with the results of these questions. The second talks about parent or guardian voice, do they feel like their voice is being heard when they bring concerns to us about their children? So the question is, at my child's IEP meetings, critical issues are discussed regarding my child's services and education, and I feel like a valued member of my child's team, which that's the key, is making sure that they feel heard and like they're part of that team servicing their child. So again, 46.4, very satisfied, 20.3% satisfied, 8.7, neutral. So we're still above 70% on, I call that positive, on the positive side. Number three speaks about adequate opportunities to communicate regarding my child and any questions and concerns. Again, we're at 44.9%, very satisfied, 17.4% satisfied, and 14.5% neutral, above 70% on that one as well. Talking about consistency of programming in question number four, I feel that my child is receiving the services that they require to make effective progress in school. 43.5, very satisfied, 10.1 satisfied, 17.4 neutral. And then our last question was about collaboration, which is hugely important and one of my goals for this year. When I need support for my child or have an issue, administration is supportive and collaborative in resolving them in a timely and professional manner. 44.9% very satisfied in that category, 13% satisfied, and 14.5% neutral, again, above 70% of our families. So some conclusions and possible solutions, clearly not the participation we were hoping for out of 591 surveys. Some thoughts as we move forward to next year is to send robocalls and emails reminding parents and guardians that, one, there's a survey coming explaining what the survey is and why it's important for them to participate in it. By two, alerting them of the, that the survey has been sent. And then a reminder, once the survey is out, that the survey is there, and if they have any problem accessing it, we can certainly reach out to help them with that. And I'm hoping that might increase our numbers. Again, the average was 73.96% of the five questions were answered neutral to very satisfied, but still an average of 26.4 in the unsatisfied, or very unsatisfied, unsatisfied range. So again, we continue to work with staff around improvements, more frequent and transparent communication, stronger collaboration with parents, and all these areas that we've identified.
April?
So, sending out 591 surveys, and I know you said you used a Google form, is there a way to track bounce back? Is there a percentage of those 591 that did not actually get accessed? And would that give it a more accurate number if you are able to deduct anything that was bounced back as, you know, an incomplete email or anything like that? Or is that 591 successfully went through, not accounting for bounce back?
We had seven bounce backs. Typically, throughout the year, the schools and central office, especially my, my office in special education, because of the frequency that we send email documents to parents, especially DocuSign documents that are specific to their child's IEP or meeting or consent to do an evaluation, we are pretty diligent about making sure that the email addresses that we have are correct and working. So we did have seven bounce backs. And that can be people change their email address, leave a job, change providers, but only seven out of those 591 bounced back.
So of the, of that number, typically, when you are sending, like, a docuSign thing, are those particular outside of the, you said it's typically the same people that participate? It's, so well, I'll assume that that 69 is the norm of who would normally participate. Of the remainder of them, when you are having to send other correspondence, are you having issues getting responses to those generally as an email? Or do you think it was the survey itself that people just didn't feel was, like, mandatory, you know, or required of them?
Yeah, I, I certainly think that that is the issue. I think we had a lot of surveys that go out in the spring to parents and families, and also students and staff. So I think people get, become weary of answering surveys, and so trying to explain the importance of the survey and also possibly switching the time of year that we do it. I like to do it in the spring, because the whole year has gone by, but I'm thinking I might do kind of a pre, pre-survey in the fall, and then maybe try again later in the spring, so that it's not overlapping with other surveys, because I feel like, you know, it's not mandatory, right? We're asking people to take a couple of minutes out of their time to give us some feedbacks that we can improve. So I, I just think that for a lot of people, you know, they don't feel like they need to voice their opinion. And honestly, it's probably that things are going okay with them, so they're not feeling like they have to give feedback. So it's either very positive feedback. I remember last year, we did a survey, if you guys, who were on the committee last year remember, with open responses, where parents could respond. And it was a 50/50 split of parents who were raving about how wonderful the whole experience was for them, and the other 50% of those surveys were people who were just not happy with, with something. So, you know, I think it's, it's kind of a split of 50/50 with the responses that we get. So I was actually happy, because our numbers went up for, on the positive side this year. So that's a small victory, I think, for the district.
Do you feel that, and I think you're right in a lot of cases, because I know that even in regards to what people respond to in general, is either they're going to, like, post or share positive experiences or negative experiences, and middle-of-the-road people tend to remain neutral or, like you said, unbothered. So that is an interesting way to look at it, that it's like status quo if they weren't, so it's almost like no news is good news, in a way, so, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm not a pollster, obviously, so I just wonder, can you get valid results if you only get 11% and 11.6% participation rate? I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if you know the answer to that.
Oh, yeah.
You think they?
You can still get bad results, yeah. I mean, I think that last year, we had 80, I'd have to look the number up, 80-something responses last year. And last year, we were about 50 to 60% positive, and the rest were not positive, strongly not positive, I would say. So I think that this isn't, I feel like even though it's a small number of participants this year, I still feel like it, it gives a good snapshot of this particular time of some form of satisfaction, even though it's that 11% of the parents. I feel like we've gone up in our satisfaction rating, and the number of responses is not that far off from last year.
But, but 100% of parents had the opportunity to give their opinion had they chosen to do so.
Correct.
Okay. So I think doing a self-evaluation is, is great, it shows initiative, and have we done other self-evaluations that maybe survey other aspects other than parents? You had mentioned maybe like, like staff, like even regular ed staff and special ed staff, or even maybe students, especially high school students, we want to be able to advocate more for themselves and actually be a part of the whole IEP, maybe starting in middle school, part of the IEP process. Do we do that, too? Are there plans to do that in the future?
So we have a parent and a student survey that go out every spring. I have not done a special education, specific one, and I think it would be difficult, and I, I'm not sure how accurate it would be, due to the fact that many of our students will require adult assistance, which kind of skews the.
Well, I understand, you don't want to highlight or stigmatize anybody. But staffing, certainly you could do, right?
Absolutely, yeah. And the staff do get a survey every year, and the whole student body gets a survey every year, but not specific to special ed, just general, do you feel, I'm sure you guys have seen the survey that goes out.
Right, I was just wondering, does everyone, ever consider doing one just related to special ed, to see what the feel is in, within the buildings?
Mm-hmm. I could, yes.
Okay. Brendan?
Just a suggestion, but why not give the surveys out with the report cards? Because I know that for a lot of the kids, they have to have their report cards signed and brought back. And my son is a special ed student, I took the survey, it was remarkably easy, took no time, you know, so it, and, not to say that no thought was put into it, but it's, you know, I can't imagine parents seeing it and going, "I can't, it's too much," you know, it was, it was very, very easy and simple. And I think it was just a question of, you know, making sure it gets right in front of their eyeballs and stuff like that. And I think that tying it with report cards, that's something every parent is waiting to see and waiting to get and trying to follow up on. to see and waiting to get and trying to follow up on. Maybe that would be the best way to do it.
We could certainly try a paper copy, you know...
Even if not a paper copy with the report card, just a reminder, like by signing the report card, you acknowledge that, you know, you know there's a survey available at blahblahblah.com or whatever, whoever method or instrument we're using.
Yeah, thank you. It's a good idea.
Any other questions?
My opinion is, people are incredibly busy in general. If they're reasonably happy, they don't take the time. It's that simple. I ask, I ask people how I run into, my wife happens to work with someone whose child goes, and she loves student services. But my guess is, and I'll ask her, did she fill out the survey? So I admire the fact that you're trying, but I wouldn't lose sleep over the fact that you only got 10% or whatever it was, a little more than 10% response.
Thank you.
I just have one more.
April?
It's IEP-specific only, not those on 504 accommodations?
Correct.
Okay.
I just, I pulled the active IEP list, and that's 591 right now.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the superintendent's report.
All right. So good evening, everyone. I want to start by saying thank you and congratulations to Indy. Thank you for what you've done on this committee. I think you've been an exemplary representative of the student body, and you've done a terrific job. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. DeAndrea.
I do want to point out, having been around a long time, every person they send, the high school sends for this position, is an outstanding individual. I agree, Indy's done a great job, but we've had other outstanding individuals too. So I applaud the, who actually makes the decision? Was Mrs. Medina?
Student council. It's an election.
Okay. They elect well.
Yeah, they do. Because I've seen in some of my other positions, some that are not so effective. And so, but you've been terrific, so thank you. Okay, so you have my newsletter, and I have the payroll and bill warrants, and I ask for you to approve those, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion of questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, 400.
Thank you. I have also, for your consideration for approval, a scholarship fund. We have received a donation from John and Betty Parks. I've done some research on these folks. I haven't been able to learn too much, but I know that they grew up in the area. I know that John grew up in Marion, and he attended Tabor Academy. I suspect that Betty attended Wareham High School. I don't have confirmation of that, so that's just, that's just what I suspected in the research that I've been able to do. They passed away a few years back. She passed away in 2014. He passed away in 2017. They had significant amount of money that they donated to a number of different schools, organizations, and groups. One of the schools is Wareham High School, and they wanted to donate a percentage of their estate to the high school, and that amounts to $689,692.06, which is a significant amount of money that we will use for scholarships for our graduating seniors. Right now, we have received the money. It is in a bank account. The town received the money, put it in a bank account that has an interest rate of 4.41%. We're looking to begin providing scholarships with this money for the class of 2024. So what I'm asking for you this evening is to vote to accept the money. And then I have spoken with Mr. Swett about this a little bit. He has some thoughts on how we might put a group together to manage this money so we can make sure that we get the maximum amount of interest that we can use to provide our students with some scholarship money. And that's certainly something that we can work on down the road. But that's where we are with it. I'm happy to answer any questions, and then I would just ask for a vote to accept the money.
April?
Yeah, is there, obviously whenever there is a scholarship, there is usually criteria as to who is able to apply. I find that when it's in memoriam of particular people, I think finding, or having, I see that you've mentioned a committee to establish the application and the rubric, but I find that, you know, doing some history, like you've been trying to dig up on the donors and their legacy, and what they were passionate about, and what meant the most. So I don't know if there's contact with their family, but I find that, especially in a memoriam, trying to find, much like the, I think the Midroby for nursing students, things like that, to find out what was important to them, to keep their legacy, especially with a monetary donation of this size, I think is really important in keeping the integrity of the donation.
I agree 100%. And we, there is some research. He worked for Boeing. He was into, he was very knowledgeable about flight, and he, some of the money that they donated went to a museum on flight, to his school in which he studied flight. And so that was one of his passions. They also loved animals, and they donated much of their money to organizations that care for animals. So those are two that we could look at. But I do agree that I was able to find that they do have some relatives that were in the area that we could, if we could contact them and reach out and get more information.
I think that would be...
Yeah, and I think that that's something that, when we put a committee together, that I think should include one or two school committee members, that would be a decision we would make.
Okay, thank you.
Matt, I just want a clarification on the number. The document we have says 624,000. I think you said 689. Is, which one are we voting on?
The information came from an email that was shared, but then I think when the paperwork came in, it was slightly different.
Okay.
So what he said is correct.
Okay.
Right.
So we make a motion, it'll be the 689,000.
Already made money. Look at this. Yeah, it's, the money was invested, so as the market shifts...
I got it. Yeah, that makes sense.
It's growing by thousands every month.
I gotta get into that account. All right, do I have a...
Accept.
Motion to accept.
Seconded.
Any other discussion?
This motion to accept, does that mean that control over the funds, once we've voted on this presumably successfully, will become the, will then shift from the control of the town treasurer, which I believe you said, who's currently in control of this account, will shift to the control of the finance director under the, who is, it seems to me we need some specificity in this motion because, in my opinion, it probably never should have been under the control of the treasurer because it wasn't given to the town. And it seems to me, since we are the governing body, that it should be under the control of the school committee, who can then, of course, delegate that to the superintendent as it sees fit, et cetera, et cetera. But I like the motion to have a little bit more specificity.
So I can, I don't, I don't know the, all the legal components of this, and when, you know, who should accept it, and then who has control over it. I do know that the money was donated to Wareham High School.
Right. And you are the CEO of that entity, and we are the governing body of that entity.
Correct.
With all due respect to Scott. So it does seem to me that the motion probably ought to say something about the control, who controls this money now that it's being, with this motion, being transferred from the town treasurer to the school district.
Is this something we may need Greg's input on?
I don't think that's a bad idea.
It's just with the sum of money. I agree with Jeff, there should be some specificity on who is...
Yeah, I've already had, and it was, it was a totally constructive conversation, an informal conversation with Derek. And because it's so much money, you know, he wants to make sure that it is handled well.
Right.
And I don't blame him. And I'm sure the Parks want it to be handled well, so...
Would this be something that we could put on our, move to our final agenda pending our, a conversation with Greg on how the finances will be directed and then make, rescind the motion to accept the donation until we have clarity?
I'm hap, I'm comfortable with that.
And by the way, I completely...
Since it's not for the class of 2024 anyway, so it's not...
I completely trust John Foster. There's no question about that. And I know at 4.4% interest or whatever it is at the moment, it's earning thousands, and he's not going to move it. So any delay is not going to do anything bad financially.
Right. So I'm happy, I can, between now and the next meeting, I'll work with Greg, get you guys all the information, if, you know, for, if there's any specific motion that we need to make.
And in your conversation with Greg, you know, they had to establish an account into which this money went, okay? That account had to have, had to have a signatory associated with it, and that, and this new account will have a different signatory. So that, I think April's right. We may want to make sure we do it very carefully to make sure that when we dot the i's and cross the t's, they're the right, the right i's and the right t's.
And I think Kristen should be involved, obviously, in that conversation as well since usually she's overseeing all things financial for the district.
All good. And if you want my input, I'd be happy to join in the process.
Excellent. Thank you.
So the motion has been, we had a motion to rescind.
Yep.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Wouldn't surprise me if Greg has a motion in mind.
Right.
Yes.
So all in favor of rescind the original motion? Aye.
Yes, aye.
400.
So we'll stay in a holding pattern until the next meeting.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. And that is all I have for my report.
All right, so next up, we have school committee report. And first up is the school committee calendar, which you should have a hard copy in front of you right now. I don't know if Dr. DeAndrea, do you want to take us through this calendar? Or, or, these basically mirror the types of meetings and times of meetings we had this year, correct?
Exactly, yeah. So this same number of meetings aligned with the days and times that we are allotted for this room. And we also just noted what we intend for to be on the agenda for those meetings, such as...
The bigger items, right.
Budget votes, mid-cycle review for superintendent, and things like that. So...
April, did you have a question?
Not necessarily a question, but can I ask that, not that it's a mandatory, because obviously these are usually something, can we put the MAS joint, an MAS joint conference on our calendar on the website? Just, I think it's important for any of us that are attending, just that the dates are there because it is something that we are representing the town and we are going, you know, generally to those conferences. So just that it's listed on the calendar.
Absolutely. We can do that.
Okay.
Okay.
I know you all know it's my favorite thing on the planet, but...
Jeff?
And I guess you'd call this a correction, but the December 7th public hearing, based on what we're looking at on the bottom, that implies that it's going to take place in this room, but I doubt that's the case. Aren't we going to do it in the middle school auditorium?
We did schedule it for this room.
Really? Is that because it's not the most popular event that we ever had?
We'll have plenty of extra seats.
I think it depends on the year, though, because we've had public hearings where the auditorium was...
Correct.
Very full. I think that that should, we should, is there a way to have that as a backup depending on the agenda for that meeting?
We can. WCTV has been short-staffed, and it's, they're there for about two and a half, three hours to set up when we're at the middle school, so we're trying to alleviate that for them.
Good point.
Been a short meeting traditionally the last couple of years. After the quick presentation, there usually isn't much after that.
You're 100% correct.
If it's being, it will be bigger, we can certainly change it.
I think just having it in the background, that dependent on the agenda and what, how the public interest seems to be swirling around it, it might not be a bad idea to have a backup plan.
Yeah.
Or an overflow or something.
What a lovely thought.
Any other discussion? So is there a motion to accept the meeting dates with the addition of the conference and mass conference date?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, 400. And our last order of business for school committee report is the school committee, subcommittees, and negotiation teams. So I contacted people individually a little bit between last meeting and this meeting to talk about possible committees we might be interested in. Basically, a lot of it's going to stay the same. I think people did a nice job in the roles they were in this year. So as we go forward, in terms of negotiations, cafeteria will be Joyce and April. Bus drivers will be myself and Brennan. Custodians will be April and myself. Unit A, which is under negotiations this upcoming year, will be Jeff and Joyce. Unit B, under negotiations this year, will be Jeff and April. Unit C, Perez, will be Joyce and Jeff. And Unit D, clerical, under negotiations this year, will be myself and Brennan. In terms of subcommittees, policy review, I'd like to keep it at April and Brennan. Budget is appointed by the superintendent, and he indicated to me that he would appoint Jeff and myself if we were interested, so congratulations, Mr. Swett. Cape Cod Collaborative, Brennan volunteered to be part of that this year. That's a change.
Thank you, Brennan.
Yeah.
Thank you, yes. Onset Scholarship, April and Brennan. Superintendent Evaluation, Joyce and Jeff. The Communications and Public Relations Subcommittee, April and Brennan. And then I did want to add another subcommittee this year called the Alumni Subcommittee. And the purpose of that committee is to highlight Wareham alumni that have gone on to do successful things in a variety of areas, and to recognize alumni from a variety of decades. I would like to focus primarily, I think, on recent graduates, but open to all decades. And to that end, if you saw Wareham Week, there is a place where members of the public can nominate recent or long-term, long-time ago graduates for us to contact, for the subcommittee to contact. We'd have a questionnaire for them, and part of that questionnaire is, what did Wareham Schools mean to you? What skills did you learn from the Wareham Public Schools? What did you take away from being part of the Wareham Public Schools? And to publicize this going forward. So it'd be on our website, so we'd turn that information over to April and Brennan, be on Twitter, Facebook. And then Wareham Week has agreed to make it part of an occasional series where they would take some of those that we put on our website and publish it in Wareham Week as well going forward. So that kind of happened pretty quickly, a little quicker than I anticipated, but I'd like to start that at some point this summer if possible. So having said that, those are the assignments. Anyone, any great concerns or refusals? Perfect, seeing none. Those will be...
If there are any, we're assigning them to Joyce.
Those will be the subcommittee and negotiation assignments for 2324. Is there any other business to be conducted this evening? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, 400.
Thank you.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.